Do you want to unmute for a second, just talk to us?
Yep, I'm here.
Awesome. Thank you so much. For those on Zoom, we're just waiting a moment for Vice President Govindarajan to reenter the room.
It's different.
All right. Hello. Today is June 3, 2025, and I will call to order the Madison Common Council Executive Committee Meeting. Staff, if you could please call the roll.
President Fedever?
Here.
Vice President Govindarajan? Alder Ughair? Alder Madison? Alder Matthews?
Here.
Alder Lankella? Alder Tischler? And Alder Figaro Cole? You have quorum.
All right. Next on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the March 25, 2025 meeting. Oh, sorry. Next on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the March 25, 2025 Common Council Executive Committee Meeting. Vice President Govindarajan, a motion on the minutes. Second? Thank you. Discussion? Seeing no discussion, is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote on the minutes? Lankella, second. Seeing no objections, we will record a unanimous vote to approve the minutes from March 25, 2025. Next on the agenda is public comment. Do we have any registrant speakers?
We do not.
Okay, great. Then we'll move on to disclosures or recusals. Members of the body should make any required disclosures or recusals under the city's ethics code. Are there any disclosures or recusals? Seeing none, let's move on to the agenda. The first item is the poet laureate request, amending the poetry recitation schedule for 2025 Common Council meetings. And Karen, did you want to provide some background on this?
Sure. So the reason this is coming before you is because CCEC had approved the original schedule, and so to amend it, to keep things in line with how things have been done, we were bringing it back for amendment. It's just to give the poet an opportunity. They needed, there was a schedule change. Going forward, we're going to go back to what I have gathered is the way we used to do it, which is president approval. So we'll just take care of this and move forward.
So are we asking for a motion to?
Aman. Approve the amendment.
Approve the amendment of the poetry recitation schedule.
Yeah.
Thank you. That was Ughair. Ughair. Any questions for staff? Discussion? All right, seeing none. Any objection to recording a unanimous vote? Seeing none, then that amendment is adopted. All right, we will move on to item three, amending various sections of Madison general ordinances to correct inconsistencies and improper references in the Madison general ordinances constituting a 2025 City Attorney Revisors Ordinance. And I'm guessing Attorney Haas, you might want to take this one.
Sure, thank you. For the new alders, we have something called the revisers ordinance. The ordinances give the city attorney's office the authority to bring corrections and non-substantive changes to the council for approval without being introduced by an alder. So maybe three or four times a year, we sort of keep a list of things that we run across in dealing with the ordinances that maybe it wasn't properly proofread. There's a grammatical error, spelling error, non-substantive changes to the ordinances that we just want to get corrected for the official ordinances. So that is what this is. The drafter's analysis that basically lays out why we are making each of these changes. In this case, they are really grammatical errors, punctuation errors. The closest thing to, which might consider a real change is in the, I guess it's number four of the ordinance, which changes the title from deputy chief of police to assistant chief, just to update that title. Otherwise, as I said, they're really all typos, grammatical punctuation errors. So we're not really talking about the substance of any of these ordinances, but if anybody has any questions, I can try to answer them.
Questions for Attorney Haas? Oh, I'm sorry. I think we're supposed to do a motion first. Sorry. Great. All right. Now, questions for Attorney Haas? All right, seeing none. Moving on to any discussion? Press your button, Bill. Oh, you did. Okay, go. Sorry.
That's fine. I just had one quick question. Why the change in the job title from deputy to assistant?
Just because that's what the, that's the current title. It was just never updated, I think, at the time when the police department changed those names of the positions.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions for staff? Now I know, thank you Alder Tischler for helping me get oriented to this space. So I know to look for the hands up. Thank you. Any discussion? All right, seeing none. Is there any objection to record a unanimous vote in favor of adoption? Seeing none, we'll record a unanimous vote, adopting item three. All right, moving on to item four. So again, this one, we're going to start with a motion to, a motion, and then we'll talk about it. Okay. All right, great. All right. So I'll introduce this item. So right now, in ordinance, we cannot start council meeting before 6:30 PM. And so the proposal is to give us some wiggle room. And so moving it to not earlier than 5:30 means that we can't start it ever earlier than 5:30. But the intention is that we would move the general start time to 6:00 PM. That would allow IT to have the half hour buffer between this meeting and common council. So we would move common council generally 30 minutes earlier than it starts now in an effort to try to move our discussions forward in a more timely manner, also to get it in track with every other board commission and committee meeting in the city, which none of them start later than 6:00 PM. But it also does give us some opportunity that if we had a particularly heavy agenda, if we had other competing events that we said, hey, we really do want to move this meeting earlier to 5:30, as long as there's not a CCEC meeting scheduled on that day, we could do that. And the way that we would accommodate this is the same method by which we use to identify whether meetings will be hybrid or online only. So we adopt it in advance. It goes on the agenda. It's an agenda item. So it would just be added in. It would be hybrid, start time 6:00 PM as a general rule. And if there was some reason that we wanted to start it earlier, then we could. So that is the intention behind this. So questions? And now I have to look at my space. Oh, what do you want to? Oh, I'm sorry, Karen. Oh, it's okay. I mean, I'm good with whatever. I'm sorry. We're going to have a staff presentation.
So I'm going to try to share my screen here. We pulled a little bit of data for you to provide you with a bit of an anatomy of a council meeting over the last year or so to give a little bit of context to what amount of time is spent on what aspects of a council meeting. And I have, we have Isaac Mathias here with us virtually, our council legislative analyst, who helped with this. He put this together. And so I'm going to go through it and talk about it. And he is here to answer questions and take notes for things that you want to find more out about. And we have some ideas as well. We wanted to get something for you today. So we were, we have some other things we still want to do. All right, let me see. Let me see if I can get this to work. Well, you say that, and then I'm going to make, okay. That's not, you know.
How is it looking?
Okay, it's looking great. Okay. So again, we, I asked our legislative analyst to look through January 2024 to present, and the categories that he used were total length of meetings, extra time awarded to public comment registrants to finish their statements. I'll speak about that later. Honoring resolutions, staff presentations and related questions and answer, period. Questions for staff and discussion. This is the initial examination. We have additional data on public comment being collected, so we will have an update for you. This is a, I have a few slides like this, just to give you an overview. I don't want to take too much time. I'll send this out to everyone, attach it to Legistar, so you can enjoy it at your leisure. Something interesting about this, I had done some data collection for comparing during the pandemic to pre-pandemic previously. And what I had noticed was pre-pandemic, it was under three hours on an average. During the pandemic, it had jumped, it had doubled. It's down slightly from our pandemic average, but not by much, which is interesting to me. I have thoughts, but I don't know. More analysis, right? I know honoring resolutions is a topic of discussion. Kind of looked at it during the pandemic. Interesting. This is an interesting one because I think there's a lot of room for discussion about how we want to handle this. As you can see, we don't, on average over the last year, we haven't used it very much. But when we, the most we've done it, we've done it for almost eight minutes. So it's kind of, I think the thing that I'd like folks to think about with this is that everyone is limited to their three minutes. And the folks who stick to their three minutes may not be called up for extra time. And so the question is, is it, I guess, the sort of, you know, food for thought or whatever, discussion question is, is it fair, is it equitable to, you know, pick and choose who gets to come up for additional minutes? And if they're trying really hard and they prepare and they stick to their notes, and then, you know, so just food for thought on that one. Staff presentations and Q and A. So that's food for thought there. Forty-eight minutes average, two hours being the longest. I know that the president has really been, you know, interested in keeping this below, you know, close to 30 minutes as we move forward. Questions for staff? And I have some suggestions at the end of the slide, so I won't take, or the presentation, I won't opine right now. But here you go. You have your 32 minutes average. Most you've spent is almost two hours, hour and 45 minutes. Discussion, very wide, you know, 34 minute average, almost two hour discussion. Kind of just food for thought on that. And this is not showing up at all. Oh, geez. Okay. Well, that's disappointing. Oh, oh, it had a, okay. See, you shouldn't have complimented anything about my ability to do a PowerPoint. It's not worth it. This is just a, you know, a snapshot of the averages. And I know that the new folks will remember some of these reminders because we were, we've talked about them in, ooh, we've talked about them in onboarding. But again, I think that one thing we highlighted when we were counting this data is, well, what are some of the things that alders can do if they'd like to, for example, ask questions of staff? But, you know, they should be able to ask the questions of staff, and we really encourage that to happen. So what we also encourage, though, is that if you read the council new business summaries, which our legislative analyst puts out after each council meeting, it gives you a nice cheat sheet summary, or of course, the agenda itself. And start your questions as soon as it's introduced. It gives you some time to go back and forth with staff. And of course, we can help you figure out which staff is the best staff to ask the questions of. That will really help, I think, to make sure you have all of your clarifying questions as best you can handled before the meeting. I really strongly remind everybody, use your blog to keep your constituents up to date on upcoming items. This council meeting where something is decided probably shouldn't really be the first time folks hear about it. So if you use your blog, we give you the meeting and event highlights, we give you the council new business summaries. Post those at a minimum. It gives folks a starting point, and, you know, I think that it's really helpful. If there's something that means a lot to you or you know means a lot to them, take the time to do a blog post about that and let them know where it's going. Encourage them to come to the committees and so on. You can also, you know, thinking about engaging your constituents outside of a council meeting. So holding office hours, going to your neighborhood association meetings, hosting community engagement events, you know, you can both be providing constituents with information and receiving their feedback. This does not have to happen solely in a council meeting. In fact, I think that there are some good arguments for some very good, deep engagement with you and your constituents in your district. So we encourage you to take, you know, take those opportunities when we can. And then I just wanted to throw a pitch for civic recognition awards. They are provided, an alder can give an award, and we've sent information out about this. We can give an award to someone who's done great work in the community or in your district, and you provide it to them in the district or in the community, which is a great opportunity. Or, you know, as Alder Madison has done, create an event where then she's able to hand, you know, sort of present people with awards. There's lots of opportunities. And it doesn't impact the meeting time. And so you can spend more time on discussion and these types of things. So that's just something to think about. There's some initial thoughts. So I just wanted to kind of throw a little bit of that in, in our conversations about efficiency, effectiveness, and use of the public's time. So we're happy to take questions.
All right, looks like Alder Govindarajan.
Thank you for that presentation. It is both beautiful and horrifying. Quick question on the averages. There was a couple where the least amount of time was zero seconds. Was that included on the averages?
Yes, those were, those were included on the averages.
If it's possible to exclude them and just email it, I'm just curious if it isn't too much work.
No, wouldn't be too much work at all. I can do that.
Thank you so much.
Alder Madison.
Of course, I am still chewing my food. However, for the budget engagement events, I do just want to say that even though I threw the event or had the event in the district and had the awards, the overarching goal, though, was to engage and to learn more about the district and engage them, but also give some awards to those folks. So when you do, if you do want to do something like that, just be mindful about creating an opportunity for you to learn from your constituents and learn what's happening over food, you know, and awards. So don't just give the awards and not do anything else. So, all righty.
Alder Ughair.
Thank you, President. Do we know the history of how 6:30 was originally selected? Why that became the tradition? Lost in history.
I will say that I asked Alder Verveer as the resident historian of the council. And then he said it used to be 7:30, and that then there was a big push to move it earlier, and then it became 6:30. So.
Thank you.
That is the best information that I have. Alder Lankella.
Just follow up on our same concept. So it ever been at 5:30 in the past, ever? No?
Not that I know of. Just, so we do, when we do the budget meetings, those start at 5:30.
Okay, so you can schedule.
Those are like, they're not regular meetings of the common council. They're special budget meetings.
Special meetings, yeah. It's not the common council, because you're saying not to start before 5:30. That means you're restricting, can ever be 5:30 or before, right?
So I mean, if there's interest from the body of not having this in ordinance at all, I am very open to that suggestion. I did ask that question, and the feedback that I received was that then, you know, somebody could decide to start meetings at 3:00 PM, and then that would be not exactly conducive to public engagement. So, but I'm, I'm open to the suggestions of the body.
No, I just was trying to see if they ever had it earlier. How was the public present in that meetings and any history of that one? So 5:30, 6:30, 7:30? How was the participation from the constituents? Only helpful to understand.
And I do think we had a sea change of participation from the public once online participation.
Online, yeah.
Responsibilities. But once we made it available to people to be online, we increased public participation quite a bit.
Thank you.
Other questions or ideas or discussion? Alder Tischler.
So if we're in discussion, I just want to, I know this is a sore point for me to bring up, but given that we serve in, this is, serving as an alder is a part-time appointment. There are, many of us have full-time jobs. I'm just, I was concerned about having enough buffer time between those who are working nine to five, let's say, and getting, getting here in person by, by 5:30 is a bit tight for some, six, you know, is doable. But just wanted to bring that, that issue up. Plus, just as, just as a dig at our public schools, the fact that it seems like, they seem to be going later and later in the, in the afternoons, after-school programs, things like that. So just want to be, just be, you know, speak on behalf of, you know, those who are still working, who can't retire yet. And then also those with school-aged children, having that, that buffer time, just so you can, you know, be there when they come home or try to feed them before they dash off.
And I do think that was part of the concern about just eliminating the time entirely, was to make sure that we were, by saying no earlier than 5:30, that we were basically taking into account people's workdays and other responsibilities. And again, we have board commission and committee meetings that start any, as early as 4:30. I think there might even be some that I feel like aging even starts at like, but maybe they're not aging anymore. So that was one of the committees that got combined. But the point is, is that they're, most of them start around the five to six hour for our committees. So this just brings it more in line with those. You know, council, it's starting at 6:30 was really the outlier.
Yeah, and I guess, and you know, seeing in the past, maybe 7:30 was a starting time. I mean, the, you know, our, you know, pandemic probably had a big part of this, but I mean, even prior to that, you know, people's typical workday is, has been shifting. But I just want to be, just to be mindful that we want to have a wide, wide variety of people who serve on the council. And that's, this is why I'm just, you know, I'm concerned about moving it too, too soon in the, in the day. So just, really just talking out loud, but just wanted to bring up, playing the devil advocate here, I guess, and stating that.
All right, I am moving to the folks online. So Alder Duncan.
Thank you, President. I would be the first to always say that I'm all about trying to get earlier meetings so that we are able to get out of the meetings faster. However, I don't think by changing it from 6:30 to six or 5:30, that actually is going to happen. And I do worry, as Alder Tischler stated, that we have individuals who work nine to five jobs who are alders, that it would make it difficult to have them get there at 6:30, but also just our residents, making sure that those individuals who have nine to five jobs, or those individuals who have families that are trying to potentially get their children fed and families fed, that they're able to log on on time. I will just highlight, I think that there are two committees that do meet at 6:30, Board of Parks Commissions, and then also the Greater Madison NPO are two that meet at, at 6:30 or later. So I would not be supporting changing the time from 6:30.
Okay, thank you. Alder Harrington McKinney.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, Madam President. I won't repeat what was said because I, that 5:30 would be, be challenging. And so I won't repeat what has been said. But I want to know, was there any consideration of putting a stop to the end of the meeting? Was that a part of discussion as well? Or is that something that is being considered?
That was not part of the discussions around this because there is, this is ordinance change. change. It is an ordinance that we start at 6:30. There is no ordinance around a stop time. So, that was not part of the discussion. Additional questions? Alder Harrington McKinney, or you?
No, that, my other question has already been addressed by the two previous alders about the starting at an earlier 5:30 time.
Okay. Thank you. Alder Matthews.
I just also wanted to kind of second, I guess, just the thought of if this is making the meetings a little bit less accessible for some folks. I know my job, my technical, like, hours are nine to 5:30, actually, which I'm not worried about that for myself, but more for like, the general public. Like, I know what I sign up for is to go to the meetings whenever they are that I need to be at them. But with like, travel time and stuff, if people are trying to come in person, or if they do have to get home from work before they can join, six doesn't seem like it would be so bad, but it does still make it a little harder for folks who start later in the day.
All right. Alder Govindarajan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Madam President. I, I mean, I agree. I think when I first put my name on this resolution or ordinance change, I was like, oh, great idea, shorter meetings. But I think now, actually, one thing in this discussion that I realized is, when I was first appointed to CCEC, I could never attend on time because I had class that ended at 5:15 P.M. So, thinking about my seat specifically, and the future students who might hold it, and knowing that 5:15 is a normal class end time, and the fact that most students don't have cars to get here and buses, I don't know. But I'm 50/50 on it. I think a good discussion that is coming out of this is public participation, though. And that sometimes, to me, begs the question of like, are weekdays even a good time to even have council meetings, which is maybe getting outside of the realm of this ordinance. But I think if, where I might lead into this is, if there is interest in that kind of discussion, that is something that I would want to look into a little bit of maybe as a council, as we're becoming a larger city, should we make it a little bit more accessible, meet on Saturdays, hypothetically speaking. I don't know, just a thought process. I don't know how I'm going to vote. That's all. Thank you.
Other, oh, Alder Figaro Cole.
Thank you. So, I guess I'm a little bit, I need clarification in regards of why are we doing this? It was mentioned something about if we have a longer agenda to start early, but how, if that, if we use that particular example, how do, do we notice this to the public and not create confusion? Like, how, because we do the agendas on Thursdays, right? Like, we approve that agenda on Thursday. So, how do you communicate that in a way that is not confusing?
In general, that would not be what we would do. Let's put it that way, because we need to have proper notice to the public. But if there were, say, for example, we knew we were doing a staff presentation on a particular day, and it was going to be, we expected it to be a longer one, for whatever reason, then we might say, hey, and again, we would only start, we'd only have the option of starting at 5:30 on meeting dates that were not coincident with CCEC. And, and we have tried to set it up so that we're also only doing staff presentations aligning that way. So, on a week that we have CCEC, we would not have a staff presentation. On a week that we don't have CCEC, we might have a staff presentation. So, that might be something we might plan ahead and say, hey, we think this one's going to be really long. But as you point out, Alder, we would need at least a month's notice for it to be that early. Otherwise, we would, in general, say, our start time was 6:00.
So, are we codifying CCEC meetings also for future councils also?
We are not. That's not part of the ordinance, but it's just the practice.
Yeah, because I mean, again, we're not saying like, that will, that's not, is, does the CCEC ordinance speaks about their meetings on time schedules and of, and how often they're supposed to be held?
Don't believe so. I'm, I'm looking to Attorney Haas, but I don't believe so.
I don't think so, but I'm checking.
Other questions or discussion while Attorney Haas is? Alder Tischler.
It's just a question for Attorney Haas. If, if, if we took it on a case-by-case basis, let's say at the end of, of a common council meeting, if we know that, you know, the next common council meeting, or a month later, there's no, there's no problem of us just voting that, that evening that the next meeting will start at, at, maybe at 6:00. Is that, it would, do we, do we need, is it just courtesy to give a, a one, one month advance notice for alerting the public, or can we just do it at the end, do a two-week notice at the, if we know that our next common council meeting, or we suspect our common council meeting is going to go, go very long, and we need more time?
I, I think the thought was it would be, it would be part of the vote at the beginning of the meeting, as far as when the, you know, the, the list of meetings is voted on for whether they're hybrid or in person. I think as far as the, the amount of time in advance, I, I think IT staff does have some concern about having enough notice because they have to schedule their, their time to cover the evening meetings. And so, I, I, the IT director told me they need at least two weeks' notice, and they would prefer really to have it be a month in advance, so that they can set their schedules and arrange childcare and things like that.
Alder Lankella.
Just wanted a personal opinion. Consistent time, I think it's going to help community to, if we keep changing, it's not just for alders, even for constituents. We don't know which one is moving which date, which time, and all, right? It's very confusing. So, having a consistent time will help. This is my personal opinion.
Thank you. And again, the purpose of the ordinance is to make it so that we have flexibility. It does not define us. Alder Duncan.
I was just going to say the same thing of making sure the challenges that we have of communicating to residents of the time of our meeting, for the most part, I would say, most residents know right now that we meet at 6:30 on Tuesday evening, or either Tuesday. But to then basically have it on an agenda a month in advance, that this one, it's maybe going to be 5:30, this one, it may be 6:00, this one, it may be 5:45. I think that it would become challenging for the residents to be engaged and know when we actually are meeting as a council.
I can just add that I, the ordinance regarding CCEC does not set a specific time for the meetings or date. Pardon? Right.
Alder Figaro Cole, did you have, was that? Okay, all right. Sorry. Other questions, discussion? I'm not seeing more. So, again, I'll just say that the goal was to be able to give us flexibility, because the ordinance right now gives us none. And if the will of the body is to continue to have the meetings at 6:30, that can be the will of the meetings still under this ordinance change. So, again, we can set things as we wish, but this gives us more flexibility. Alder Madison.
Thank you. I don't think we need any change. I get absolutely what you're saying, but just having been on council for a while now, I don't think that we need any room to be flexible. I think we need to hold fast, to set times, set rules, and not give people, because I, I can just see this kind of going in a non-positive direction, potentially. I see it having that potential. But I absolutely agree with, you know, what you're saying, that this is not about like, changing the time necessarily, but giving us the flexibility to do so. But because we would end up having that flexibility, I can see that going down not positively in the future. I also find it, it would be a challenge for me to start a little bit earlier, because, you know, we have programs that start at 5:30 or 5:00, and I'm normally trying to split my time between getting here on time, and also being present to do my part in the office on some of those. So, that could be a challenge for me, and, you know, a challenge for others. So, but just thinking about the last couple years, I don't think we need to give ourselves more flexibility on this one.
Is there any entrance, interest in an amendment that would set a specific start time, or is there preference to simply vote on the ordinance proposal in front of you? All right. Seeing none, we will go to a vote. Madam Chief of Staff, please call the roll.
All right.
We're voting on the ordinance change in front of you.
It's a rec, it's a motion to approve, or recommend approval, sorry.
Good.
Vice President Govindarajan.
Yes.
Alder Ugher.
Yes.
Alder Madison.
Okay.
Okay. Alder Matthews.
No.
Alder Lankella.
Yes.
Alder Tischler.
No.
Alder Madison.
No.
Ooh, three yeses and three noes, I believe means that the chair votes.
Yes.
With four yeses, the motion passes.
Is it me, or is it?
No. Alder Figaro Cole, only.
When somebody's.
When someone's absent, and today, no one is absent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So, then this will move to council this evening for their discussion, full, full council discussion. All right. We will move on to item four. Nope, five, excuse me, council office updates.
Okay. I will hopefully share my screen again, just to give the new folks a little bit of context. I like to provide at every CCEC meeting, a bit of an update on the activities that our office, are happening in our office, projects that I'm working on, open up for any questions or feedback, or anything that you'd like to do. I also like to provide training opportunities, flag training opportunities, things that we're developing for you specially, but also things that, you know, as they come along, that the city is offering, because you do actually have access to quite a lot of free professional development from the city, and they've really increased their offerings. And I really recommend, you know, you, you take a look. There's even on-demand courses, so if your time, you know, time doesn't permit. So, what this has is, I, I like to try to give you a heads-up on any staff out of office that I'm aware of when I present this. So, that's there. I've also sent this to everyone, and I'll send it to all alders as well. Some reminders and tips. And then I, and this one, I just wanted to give you, it's mostly training-related. We're very, very close to finding a time for the alder retreat. I had some finalists, and I didn't, I wanted to get one more round of opinions before I chose one, because there were some ties. So, if you haven't yet gone back in your inbox once more and chosen again, please, please do so. I really appreciate. I saw several of you getting on that today. I was very excited. So, we will get done. And again, if you just want to email me back, respond to my email, and tell me which of those four days listed in the email, you can, you know, that's also fine. I'll put in your, 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 your choices. I wanted to also let you know about, oh, something, I forgot a couple things on here. One, another thing is the 8:00 PM 3-5 training. So, it has been moved to online for logistical reasons, and it's the June 30th meeting is the meeting that's scheduled. We had to change the July 15th because of the movement to online. Right now, I think we have quite a number of people registered for that. So, I'm going, we're going to go, go forward with it. And then if we need another session to catch the additional folks, we'll, we'll figure that out. I can actually probably tailor it, because I'll know who wasn't able to make it, and I'll cross-reference schedules. And that's going to be co-facilitated by Anna Price from DCR and myself, and also visited or attended, you know, just in case, by Attorney Haas, in case you have great questions that, legal questions that I don't dare answer. So, I appreciate that. Thank you very much for, for signing up for that. So, the city Equity and Social Justice Manager, Kristi Kumar, recommend, or requested that I also try to find a time this fall to provide you with a training on Racial Equity and Social Justice Initiative, RESJ. You hear it all the time. The equity analyses processes, she may also want to do some basic work, kind of what, what, what they do in the RESJ Foundation's trainings. Just giving you advance notice on that. So, I, you know, my doodle polls, I'm sure you love them, and there'll be plenty of opportunities to enjoy clicking those boxes in the coming months. Okay. And then I, I also wanted to let you know, so, for the new folks, you know, we had a big effort to streamline some of the BCC offerings, the boards, commissions, and committee system. And that's ongoing. And additionally, what is ongoing is a revamp and improvement of an assessment, revamp improvement of the tools that exist to train BCC staff. The way the system is set up, as you can imagine, with so many boards, commissions, and committees, it's a train the staff, it's kind of a train the trainer situation. We train the staff, and then the staff are expected to train their chairs and their members as they be, as they come on board. So, as part of the streamlining, we're really keeping our attention on the project of improvement, not just, you know, as you consider possibly making additional changes to the form and number of these different committees, we're going to be working on the, the other side to try to help improve the support process, so that staff have what they need, and there's more consistency, and we're working towards that. So, I just wanted to give you a brief update on that. I'll be bringing information back to you as it develops. I thought there, and I had thought of something else I forgot to, but now I've forgotten what I forgot. So, I apologize for that. Hmm, I really, now I wonder what it is. Okay. That is brief. You, you get an email in your inboxes from organizational development highlighting update, upcoming city trainings. Our Legislative Process Liaison, Liz, also tries to flag some of them for you in her newsletter that she sends out monthly. It's, again, those, there's a lot of places to find that information, and I do recommend it as we continue. So, I'm not sure if anyone has any questions for me, or anything, but I'm, I'm happy to.
Questions for staff. Seeing none, this is not an item that we need to take a vote on. So, then I think we're moving on to item six, future agenda items. And Karen, can I ask you to provide some background on this?
Sure. Thank you. Yes. So, future agenda items, item, is required by ordinance to be on committee agendas. And it gives the committee members an opportunity to offer up topics that they would like to have come back to the committee. We don't take a discuss, we don't have a detailed discussion of the content of those items, because they're not properly noticed specifically. But what we do is, we make a call. So, the chair will make a call for future agenda items. We'll take a note of anything anyone wants to provide right here in the meeting. You can also email us. I mean, I, if you email me, I would of course loop in the, the chair and add it to the list as well. And then, as we're going along, of course, the chair can choose from those items. And if the body has a very strong opinion, they can actually make a motion to bring something to the, to the agenda at, when we're on this item, since it's always there. So, that's the, that's the spirit of that one.
So, right now, we are looking for suggestions for any future agenda items from anyone. Alder Lankella.
Just going to bring up, or Alder Barbara McKinney is bringing up as the ordinance to end time. Is that something that we can, not to go more than five hours, six hours, something like that one can be future? The way we start, we should also have an end time.
It's been tried.
Is it tried?
But we can absolutely add it to the agenda.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Alder Tischler.
Some point within the, within the year, I'd like to bring back the discussion that we had earlier about having the, the, the change in our BCCs with having maybe two, two alders, one even, one odd. If you remember that, that lengthy. two, two alders, one even, one odd. If you remember that, that lengthy discussion we had in the past. So just, you know, going into, you know, before, we're going to have, you know, 10 new, you know, 10 alders running again, and just coming, and we'll be all reappointing again, or to committees. I just wanted to have that discussion possibly before, before alders are appointed back onto committees again, so.
And I will go ahead and add for future agenda items, talking about reducing the size of council. Any other future agenda items that anyone would like to identify? Going once? Going twice? All right, great. So we have a future agenda items list. Thank you all. And with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. And I am sensing that there is likely no objection to a unanimous vote in favor of adjournment. Seeing no objections, we will record a unanimous vote to adjourn. Thank you all, and thank you all for making my first CCEC meeting relatively painless. I appreciate it, as I am also on a learning curve. So thank you.